Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Q is absent. John?
Here.
And Deb?
Here.
Thank you, Dale. Thank Harold and Curtis for coming in today. And we really appreciate you taking the time to make us a little wiser, draw on your wisdom.
I've got that, sorry.
I think you guys kind of know kind of where we're at and have a good sense of the project, but I'll turn it over to you.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Better.
It's gonna move.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Can move. I'll turn it over to you, Curtis.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, I'll thank the board for having this work session. A couple of weeks ago, we met with Lindsey, Tyler, and Deb here. Short discussion about your approach and your delivery system that you want to use for your upcoming bond issue that you had in April. And so, it was brought to our attention that you may be leaning towards maybe using a construction manager on this, your delivery system. And so, what about those three? We just kind of want to give you kind of a different point of view, maybe a different opinion in how you can approach your projects, because you could have multiple projects on, it sounds like. I've downloaded, printed up, and read kind of the information you guys put out, which is, by the way, is great. It's very informative, so. So, from that aspect, I guess what we're here to kind of let you know is that either some different options you can approach as you go, once you successfully get the bond issue passed, which I think you probably will. Once it goes into the construction phase, kind of what options you can look at, whether it be a CM or we call it a triad, which is kind of the system you used when we did the high school. Which is you bid it, you have one general contractor, underneath the general contractor is all the, we call it subcontractors. So, you have one person to kind of point to. So, I'll give you a little background. For the last about 18 years, we've been tracking the CM process. It's been around for several years, several decades, but it's been more prominent here since about 1999, 2000. And so, we've been kind of tracking that. So, we'll send people out to bid openings, like you have when you do yours, and track information from that aspect of it. And through that process of us doing that, we've talked to different boards like yourselves across the state of Iowa. To kind of, when they get in the situation, they've been approached by CMs, we offer them an avenue, like we're doing now, to sit down and say, "Okay, well, think about this. Here's some things you may want to ask the CMs to clarify." There's a lot of times it can be kind of convoluted, time percentages, or reimbursables, and all kinds of lingo out there that you need to kind of be, that we're here to kind of help maybe give you some background on. So, one of the things I asked Tyler when we first met was, what is, what was your concern that led you to think, to believe that you want to go to a CM process? And then, so my, maybe my first question to maybe other board members is, what I've been told is that while we had multiple projects possibly going on at one time, and then we had, like, call it the issue with the water line at the high school, that was a design part of it, but, but what's your concerns, I guess, and that led you to go to a CM process or look at that?
You know, just from my personal point of view, it would just be, you know, managing multiple projects. If we had multiple, you know, contracts, that was the primary for me. And I don't know if anyone has anything different than that, but.
I think it was primarily the multiple projects. I kind of equated it to something that we do where I work, which is like a project that has many kind of tentacles and that one person who, or one group that we can look at can be our advocate.
Okay.
As opposed to maybe necessarily just trying to protect themselves or something. I don't know, that was a horrible way to say it, but, you know, somebody who's looking out, who's more leaning towards our needs.
Yeah, so I think, as we've talked, it is, the primary one, I think you're spot on, Curtis, is, well, we're likely with all of these different projects to bundle them up into three or four or five different packages. And how does that get managed in a GC approach, right? So, that's, I think that's a primary. You mentioned the water line, but I want to reiterate what we talked about that Saturday morning, is we greatly appreciate all the efforts that were made by Pike Construction with the middle school and the high school, and we're very happy with both of those. So, this is, I'd say, on my behalf, it has nothing to do with that, okay? It's that we're not building a single building, we're going across the whole campus with multiple projects. So, that's, that's the primary, but along with that, to Deb's point is, as we look at our staff, our administrative team, we want to make sure that we've got somebody that's looking out for us, such that can leverage Lindsey, can leverage Gail, and be basically an extension of the Gilbert School District in that whole process. And that's also something that's, that I think is appealing to us for a construction management. So, I think those would be the two primary drivers for it. The third one, which I don't know that it's a big one, but the pre-construction aspect is intriguing to me at least, and that is, well, you've got another set of eyes on it before it even goes out, which I think is helpful, which, again, I'm going to go back to that water line, just from this standpoint, is, well, somebody should have gotten the exact information rather than making some assumptions. And I think that by having a, if we go the route of construction management, you got pre-construction, somebody to get to that and go, "Have you checked with the city? Is that really the size of the water line?" And so, that pre-construction is an aspect that I think is also beneficial, but it's not the primary reason. So, I think there's kind of all of that in the mix, which says this is very different than when we built the high school and the middle school.
Right, I think during our conversation, we're talking about, it's kind of that, I guess I call it the, you know, if you do multiple, what I understand, I think, in terms of SAM too, is that you can do a couple of projects this year, maybe the entries or the, I call it the stream. And possibly next year, you could maybe have it, maybe possibly four projects in the stream or in the system or something like that. So, it's, you know, it's a strain on you when anybody on the facility side didn't, you know, attend all those meetings and that kind of stuff, so from that aspect of it. But I guess from the general side, from the general side of it, I guess, from the general contractor side, I guess, we look at it as, if you bid it the triad method, you have one person to do it. So, it may be individual people, you know, it may be individual, if you do four projects, depends on how you scope it out, right? You may have four individual contractors, but what I'm trying to look at from the CM aspect of it is that, okay, so if the CM does, if you hire the CM, is the CM going to have, if you have four different projects going on, is the CM going to have four different people, or is it going to have one person who oversees all four projects?
That was the discussions we've had.
And that's, because each one carries a cost, obviously.
Sure, but it also leverages that second issue, which is how do we, how do we leverage our own internal staff to make sure that that doesn't get overwhelmed with all of these different projects?
So, from that standpoint, I guess I was looking at is that with, with knowing who you had as your design team last time, and you get Sam on board, I guess I'm looking at is that, from his aspect, that to me, that's an art viewpoint, that's why you hire an architect to represent you as a conduit for information and making sure the project gets done properly. Because he's going to develop specifications and plans, what everybody has to adhere to. One thing we look at, when you look at the CM model, is, is, you know, potentially, depends on how they break it down, which again, usually goes back to their reimbursables, okay? So, having multiple bid packages then, is who controls, who controls those people, okay? Who's the one that, you know, makes sure that the work is getting done? The CM has different, different roles in your project. So, one thing we'd mentioned at our meeting a couple of weeks ago is that you have a CM as like an advisor. Just one aspect you can do, is have a CM as an advisor, separate out of the, separate out of the triad, which is, they can go to these meetings, ask the questions on your behalf, or if you even want to, if you want to use that, that's one option you can look at. I think the other option you got to look at when it comes to construction management is the, is the hold harmless agreement. So, when you have a contract with us on the high school, I gave you a, I gave you a slip of paper that says, "I signed a contract saying I hold you harmless," okay? The CM, the way the CMs are in the state of Iowa, since they're not recognized as an entity, they can't hold you harmless. So, you have all these different bid packages, this guy we expressed, we went to the project in the high school, that you have all these different bid packages, okay? Each one's a potential lawsuit.
So, your liability's higher, in essence, that's a function of.
Okay, so, so here's a good example I'll give you here. I bid a project, say you have a flooring subcontractor underneath my wing, I'm holding you harmless. He goes out of business, something happens, he's gone, whatever happens, I'm obligated, under my contract to you, to find someone to perform that task and get it done for you. Okay, enter a CM scenario, that guy goes out of business, then you're going to pay the CM, go back and rebid it, lose time on the schedule, okay? But he has no control over that part of it, and you're stuck with the extra cost, because they have to go back, find some bidding, the price goes up, you have potential of that. We've also had projects, and Ankeny, they actually added an Ankeny, it was last year or two years ago, where they had a CM on it, bid the project, and the flooring guy actually backed out. Wouldn't sign the contract, the little guy, that was backed out.
Cost him $40,000 extra.
Cost him $40,000 extra to get a new flooring.
That is a big deal, we're talking about here. We're responsible for all those packages that the CM wants to get over, except PM. We have to bid the fee, we have to bid the general conditions, we have to lock in. And you get them fees going up there for pre-construction, and for construction paid, and for a reimbursal, it's a reimbursal that's the kicker. At Iowa State, they had two projects, one on 1.5 million, one on 1.7 million. When we tally those up, about $3 million of the project, the CM got 1 million plus. That's 43.
They say 30, what did you bid?
Close 40%.
That should get you careful.
And most of it, and then over, three quarters of that was in the reimburseals part of it.
You've got to be very careful here.
So, one thing I would advise you on, if you're, if a CM is your way to go, most of the CMs that approach school boards are general contractors, okay? They can bid the reimbursables. You should go to ask for it and get a lump sum bid based on the scope of work that he provides. That should not be out of the realm, that should not be, I got you question, little guys. They should all know, I'm doing a project that goes 18 months, again, they're our competitors, okay? So, we know who these people are in this area that do this stuff. They can do this. And if they're as good as they say they are, it shouldn't be a problem. But I think that then locks you in, so then you don't have to worry about on the tail end of something, having to pay extra, when you have your 14 million, right? Because I look at, let me just, just from simple math, 14 million, if they just charge you 5%, that's 700,000. Take 700,000 divided by, most schools go between 150 and 175 a square foot per addition, that's a 4,000 square foot building. That's the dollars, that's why I'm sitting in front of you guys today. Those are real dollars we're talking about, okay? So, we're after bad, 14 million, you potentially, okay? It depends on how the project comes in, it depends on the bid, the bid market is. Right now, I tell you, the bid market's pretty darn busy out there. And the projects you do next year, who knows how it's going to fare out, or how you do them, and how you even package them together. That's if you can or can't. But those things you want to look at from the CM aspect is lock them in, and they should be able to do that.
You're talking about the reimbursables, job site, office support, those kind of things?
Those things.
Right.
We, my dad just talked, we bid those, we bid them to you?
We had to lock in.
We lock them in. Because that question you ask yourself is that, what if a project goes over on schedule? Okay? Now, here's the kicker. You hired the right guy right here, because you know why? On their projects, they put down for penalties. They have liquidated damages.
Sometimes, depending on what district, and we haven't had that conversation, but.
But most, most of their projects do, which I applaud, all right? So, ask yourself this question. You know, the project has multiple bids on it, multiple primes on it, and that, that job goes overscheduled, and that, and you enact liquidated damages? I guarantee you can get a lot of this.
Well, he did it. He was a good guy.
If you have a general contractor, you go to the project meeting and say, "Curt, you're getting the bill, I'm going to disperse it out to your subs, you're getting the penalty." You with me?
Yep.
So, it depends on how much you want to get into. Then I guess, sit there and tell you, on the bid packages, that each one of those bid packages is a separate mound.
It's a contract, right?
Contract. It's a separate, each one of those is a separate payment request. It's a lot of paperwork. There's warranties and guarantees and all that stuff. So, there's the administrative part that, you know, you may get lessons over here, but you have.
It wasn't on her.
It wasn't on her.
Yeah. So, Curtis, when you mentioned the triad, tell me how that, you know, so, because one of the things we're worried about is, is just, you know, having multiple contractors. So, tell me how you, how that works, that kind of gets us over the hump on that.
Under the state law, right now, public agencies are supposed to do a design bid build. You hire the architect, and then he develops a plan, specifications, advise you, and in some cases, as far as I'm concerned, answer his, Tyler's question, that architect is responsible for administration, is responsible for plan specs, is responsible for the costing, come up the budget. Now, he can either outsource that to somebody, a lot of contractors, like, "Oh, get somebody, give me an estimate on this, I can do it right." And send a billboard, and they can put it in their fields, okay? He can do that with the consultants. He puts that whole package together, and then if you want him to do the observation, they're going to be careful in illegal terms, if you, we used to call inspections. Now, you've got to say, "Observation." So, we've got to be careful of those two words. Observation, that's what you want this CM to do, to observe. That can be in the, I'm going to call the excellent architect firms have that as part of their service. So, he is your eyes and ears. But if you're not quite sure about the architect? I should have brought my thing to try it. You got the owner, you got the architect, you got the tenant. And that's right. There's nothing wrong if you want to hire by the hour, someone to bounce your questions off. You keep the communication within the architect owner in general, communication there. You don't have anybody else filtering that. Right now, you're looking at putting that owner up here, right underneath that, your CM, and down here, the architect and contractor. Look, to me, that's filtering information on both sides, and when one of them's my competitor, you think he's going to give me a good deal? In case I get one of your packages? He can play both ends of that, you don't know it.
Yeah, right.
I like to talk to you, but cannot, not through some guy who's my competitor. And I'm going to put on camera here, and it's unethical what they're doing.
Can you guys?
You wouldn't hire another teacher to watch over your science teacher, you wouldn't hire another student to watch over Lindsey. That's where I'm coming from.
But we also wouldn't want Lindsey to have to be a teacher, right?
No, I'm talking about.
He couldn't do it, didn't do it years ago, but.
Hire a student over him, to watch him. I mean, it's ridiculous. You're getting to get too many layers here. You've got a qualified architect, you've got a qualified general, and you're the owner.
Can you talk through, again, the specific scenario we're talking about, which gets all the way back to your initial question, Curtis, is, you know, we could potentially have four simultaneous large projects, that if they're bundled up that way, if we went the construction management, or the GC route, general contractor route, there could be four different ones sent out. Maybe not all the same day, but they will all be going on simultaneously, which by law, we're required to take the low bid. And it's been great working with you guys for the high school and the middle school, who came in and gave us a great bid, but there's really no way that you can sit there and say, "Well, don't worry, we'll get all four of those," and then it's all in the same camp. So, with the assumption that there's four projects out there, and there's four different GCs, how does that work?
Are you going to the CM architect overall for?
Yeah.
Then he should be responsible. He's got the administration to do it.
So, so now, I'll go back to our experience in the high school and the middle school was, well, with that architect firm at least, well, it taxed our administrative team, because they were sitting in a lot of meetings, right? And, and we had, and so now, I'm sitting there going, in my mind, just the experience from the high school, is, what does that look like if there's four different GCs? I mean, that, that's really the point that we're trying to wrestle with, because it is, it is a multiple project bond. Sam?
I'd like to clarify a little bit about my, our role as, as a construction administrator, you know, and so, our job is to observe, you're exactly right with the terminology there you're hailed. We're, we're, by our contract and our liability insurance, we're required to conduct construction administration type duties. Now, that, that involves typically, it's a, a once a week meeting, we can go more often if, if we work out the fee negotiation. However, we're not typically onsite every day, right? So, when, when something flares up, or if something goes, there's a, there's a problem, the day after we're onsite, it goes a whole week before we, as the administrator, kind of raise the red flag and say, "Hey, what the heck is going on here?" That's too long for something to be remedied, right? So, that, I just, I want to be clear on our role as construction administrator, that, that we're not charged with catching every, every single thing. We're, our, our job is to observe about once a week during the hot and heavy portions of the construction and verify if design intent is being, is being maintained.
I agree, you can use that. That's why, that's why you run your organization, because there's other architects that supply that inspection service or observation service in their, in their program. So, you would have the option then, if you wanted to, hire somebody to be out there, that you'd be your conduit, in case something flares up.
Right, exactly, you're exactly right. So, we could hire some, an additional observer that is there every day, however, that would be an additional fee that we would then incur and then pass on there.
Sure, I understand that.
Not much different than what maybe a CM would be.
Hold on, I'm going to question that right there.
Sure, I'm just making.
It'll be cheaper than the guy that paid the CM what you want to do.
Sure, sure. One way or the other, the point I'm trying to make is that, for, for what I would consider a necessary day-to-day maintaining of the, the goings-on on the construction site at potentially four or five different locations, that's, that's a, that's a full-time job, right? That's a full-time position. Whether, whether the owner pays for it, for the design firm to help observe that, or, or a GC, or a contractor, that, that's additional fee that normally wouldn't be a part of my role.
Yeah, well, I.
Does that make sense? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I have examples of that.
I think, again, that, there's always, looking at your project, there's different ways to approach it. There's your two major additions for the high school and the middle school. So, one way you can look at it is, you do the high school project, is bid it as, do each addition, bid it as one project. You have different timeframes on it, different stuff, you do it that way, okay? Conversely, on the middle school, again, you bid it as one project, so I just took your four down to two, okay? If, but middle school's a little bit different, a little bit.
Yeah, I think when we were talking about bundles, and, and this is resolved, I mean, this is kind of the process we're going through, right?
Yes.
Because what we, what we do know is the board, what, in November, approved the list like that, right?
Right.
And everybody goes, "Well, that's, those aren't going to be handled one-offs, they're going to be bundled," but it could be by building, right? So, the elementary's got some ventilation and some other things going on, is that one. This, this one, again, back and some other things, and the band room, or down on the, the inside. And then, exactly like you said, Curtis, I think the intentions were that, well, it could be a middle school bundle and a high school bundle, but, but even then, you've got four, right? Now.
Well, you get, right, but you'd have, contract, you'd have two different, you'd have two different contracts, but.
And then throw athletics complex and stuff in there as well.
Right.
So, at minimum, I think you break it down into three, couldn't be as many as five. That's how, that's how we've been thinking about it, depending on how.
Three or five, but it's not, it's not one.
It's not one.
Which, you know, again, great job in the high school, great job in the middle school, was, was a lot cleaner from that standpoint, right?
So, here's an offer, here's one I want you to think about as a board.
Yep.
Again, this is a process in front of many school boards. Dallas Center Grimes, okay? We suggested to them, and they did this model, where you, if you hire the CM, right, for this, for this project, say for the high school project, right? You bid it, but you also allow a GC like us to bid it as one, as one, how we normally bid it. So, what you do is you take all the bid packages, they would break it down into, plus their fee, the parent, I guess, the bid we give you. DCG that did that on a, I think it was on their high school or middle school, saved them a million dollars on.
15 million.
15 million. They decided to go the triad, built it, locked away, boom, they're good. Okay? Saved a million bucks.
So, you, so.
We didn't bid on it.
No, no, but I mean, you're saying you, we have the, we'd have various construction managers bid on this, or one bid it.
So, what we.
But you're also saying allow GC to bid it as.
If you have, I take it you're hiring one construction manager to do all the projects?
Gotcha, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, but two. But to clarify, you'd say, "Well, we're actually putting out two different ways to bid it."
Right.
So, in other words, let's say that there's 15, which, you know, you guys have talked about, there might be 15 different subs for one project, right?
And packages could be, it depends on the, we call it packages.
Packages.
Packages. Flooring paintings.
Yeah, so in that package, you might have 15 subs. So, what you guys would say is, "Well, bid it, put it out there for a GC bid," and you'd say, "Well, we'll take the whole thing." The same time, it's simultaneous, is what I'm hearing, construction manager with taking those 15 subs and taking those out, and we compare the sums.
Right.
And the architect fees in there too. What they did down there, they took the agents and the general bid, and they had the architect's fees, then they had the CM fees, and you put that up. Over here, they had about a million some odd dollars, that CM. Over here, the general had nothing, because it's cost right up in here.
Yeah.
Right there, it's fair and square, seen it? You know what I mean?
Sure, and then.
Or perhaps we're opportunity, I guess the word I'm looking for is opportunity, because the CM is locking out a lot of people.
Yeah, and again, again, I mean, you asked, go ahead.
What I'm saying is that, it's a simple thing that you put on the bid form, so it's something, you gotta reinvent the wheel to do what we're just talking about. Every time we do a project, they provide a bid form. So, I do, on the bid form, just provide a spot that says, you know, GC bid for all packages, you just, you fill a number in it. So, your analysis is right there. One of the things we've seen too, I'll give you a heads up on, is that the bid market we're in right now, and I'll give you some information, we just got hot off the presses and this stuff, sometimes you'll get prices on all your bid packages, okay? That's one concern you can, you can have with this thing.
But I realize anybody to do the elementary work, because it's too small for whatever.
Okay, yes, and I got to stop this, we're contingent upon what we're talking about here, just. Secondly, you may lock out people that are in the district that can't bid, because they can't provide, they cannot provide.
A bid bond.
Extension, bone box construction, outfits, carpets. Those are three that pop my head, that are locked out from this process.
Now, why can't they provide a bond?
Because they can't, because it's.
They're not set up, the front of the bond, performance and payment bond.
The CM makes them.
That doesn't mean they can't do the work.
Right, so, if any, any entity that has a contract with a, with a school board or school district has to have a bond as part of it.
Well, then a bid bond, then that's a supply, performance and payment bond. A bid bond could be, can be, you know, through insurance, can be cashier's check, it's a performance and payment bond that we give to you, that they have to provide, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So, we typically want to see any prime contractor offer both of those bonds.
That's right.
Right. And those people would not be able to do that, why? The, you know, the ones, the little ones that we were just talking about, what was, I just want to clarify, what was the reason that they couldn't do it?
A bond vests us. A bond vests each person. They cannot get a bond, maybe they're not vetted right, something, other financial statement, but we work with a lot of people who can get bonded.
Okay.
They know their work, they can do their work, we're trusting, that's our responsibility, okay? And then we apply the big bond, when we bid it all, that protects you, and it takes a, and we've got, we're bonding that's seven or less on what's underneath us, that's what we're doing. Feedback's out, I'm still responsible.
Yeah. So that's another thing we've seen through the years of doing this, of tracking this information, so a school board then is left saying, wait a minute, what's my total cost of my project? There's a guy, why I got reimbursable, sit down here, I have no idea what that's going to be yet, and I have a bid package, where it'd be flooring, have no number on it, so what's, so how do you plan for the next thing, right? Case in point, Story City up there, just bid two different projects, you guys are architects on this one. One was a CM project, Baker Group was a CM, it's an HVAC renovation, okay? It involved a mechanical electrical bid package. They bid it, came in over budget, came in about, it's actually the Ames paper, if you want to read about it today, it's in Ames paper, I don't mean it today, came in $400,000 over budget, okay? We bid a science remodel that came in as a, what am I talking about here? $150,000 under budget. They had to go through in order to do the HVAC project, what it says in here, they had to go back in value engineering, which is when they took money, took scope out of the work they had for that HVAC project, to get it in their budget, right, to make this whole thing work. And then when they bid, and they bid a middle school up there last year, they came in $200,000 under budget, using the conventional system we're talking about here. Thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars we're talking about here, that there was saved, right, using one method, and they went over $400,000 on another project. You have an HVAC project you want to do, I think for this one, and the one over there. If you bid it out CM method, they're probably gonna say, well, do it in mechanical electrical. There'll probably be some paying involved, some structural work involved, things that we would do, but they go through the packages, that's what, that's just the way it is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Potentially, you can get nobody to bid on it, because the one, the HVAC package, I think they had maybe two mechanicals, one electrical, okay? We go out and bid these things, we just got one today from, bid results today in the job, they just bid down in, at three o'clock down in Norwala, $16 million project down there. They only got two drywallers bidding on the thing, okay? Those two drywallers, the same two drywallers you see on a lot of projects, because they're the one most capable of getting the bond to bid the project. So you're gonna pay a little bit higher.
So they're going to CM route.
They'll go CM route, okay? So we got like three or four packages, and you just have two people bidding on it, and it's usually the same few people who see, have bid a lot of these flooring, VCT carpet, or just because they can provide the bond, and they know that, so they go to competitions out there so they can raise their prices. You with me? You won't see it until you get to the end and say, oh my gosh, I had 14 million, all of a sudden, why am I, why am I going over budget?
So who are you guys using in that case, if you do a GC and you need drywalling? Do you do your own?
So if I do drywall, I'll get other, I can get other competition that can't provide the bonds, like a molenbach? Molenbach's competitive around this area, it gets a lot of work, don't get me wrong. John's a great guy, but he just can't bid, he can't bid at these packages.
I'll step in with that point as well. We've seen for some of these smaller trades of flooring and drywall, where a typical GC will actually be the one who's, will have GCs be the ones that are submitting bids for that flooring bid package, that drywall bid package. When they're not self-reforming any of that work, all they're, all they're doing is providing that bond for a likely, you know, flooring or drywall contractor, whoever it is, so we'll see more typical GCs for flooring, drywall, things like that.
But I think this is a board game, you gotta give yourself some options. That's kind of what I'm trying to help you go through here. You have the option, you can, if you're deciding to go CM, I'm just trying to give you some of the things we've seen over the years, that can, but you do have an option, if you do that, I would suggest, just bid as one project and compare the two costs, you have them right there.
Right, so in that scenario, Curtis, one of the aspects, you know, so the, I guess we said there was three things that were leading us towards construction management, right? So you've just kind of talked through, well, how might that look, what that would look like, you know, there's still the potential that there's three or four or five different GCs in the same campus. But let's say that we went this route of bidding it that way, and GC was below, and we decided to go that route. One of the other key factors, and we talked about that as a board, is how do we minimize the load on our team, and specifically, you know, the day-to-day stuff, because Lindsay can speak to this much better, but I mean, when we're building the high school, that was your first year, first two years on the job, I mean, there wasn't, I mean, that was a big chunk of time, right? So again, and that was in the GC realm, right? So help us with how to resolve that.
Well, I think, I think when we're talking a couple weeks ago, I think it gets to, it gets to a matter of trust, right? Okay, you want somebody that can speak for you and listen to your concerns, and/or vice versa report back to you concerns they may have, what things are going on. You're not in the construction business, right? But you want to have that trust, somebody you can rely on, that part of it, right? So what I'm looking at is, we've had this in the past, and another project, wasn't one we did, but I think the school district kind of, not outside person, it was a retired principal, or somebody they hired on, say, hey, just go these things, and he just hasn't construction knowledge, say, hey, so you can hire that, you know, whether it be through him, and then the thing, the school board just hired him on, just for that purpose, just go these meetings to be their eyes and ears. And I can guarantee, that's gonna be a lot less expensive than the, if you go CM route.
So Curtis, when we did this, when we did the high school, again, different architectural firms, either here or there, Paul Aaron's was kind of the eyes and ears.
Correct.
That when we went to construction meetings, he was the one that was there. If we do something like this, and I'm kind of piggybacking on what Tyler's saying, how does, how would this work? Would we have, would we need to contract someone separate? Would we need to work with Hala and say, we need to have someone there? You know, I'm, construction is not my forte, so, you know, I can go to the meetings and stuff like that, but I need someone that is, has that background and knows what the heck's going on. What are our options, and do we have to hire someone as an outside source, or hire Hala to do a little bit more on the package, maybe that should be to you or to you?
Yeah, he can hire that person, if he knows the construction industry, that's right, you hired him, right? Aren't you authorities, yeah?
For the design, not the construction.
Ooh. Not the construction?
I'm there to verify design intent is being made under construction, that's how the contract is written.
Okay, well, anyway, he's in the business, and he should know who he could hire to do the inspection. Mary Greeley Hospital, I work for James Thompson, the hospital hired an ex-retired Mason, had no politics involved, nothing, put him on a job site, and he was the main conduit right to the architect. He answered, he recorded, he put everything down in the diary, et cetera. If he had a question, if we had a question on the job, we go through him, he goes to the architect, put that question. That's a lot cheaper and less expensive than what you're looking down the barrel at.
So this person can act, it sounds like I'm hearing a potential strategy of a third-party entity being hired, an owner's rep of sorts, that could help package all the different correspondence into a singular entity project.
Right.
So I might, I ask the same question maybe in a different way. So these folks here are understanding or interpreting the potential of three to five projects as a singular project, and so one strategy is, yeah, to hire an owner's rep that is there day-to-day and writing meetings, is there another, is another strategy, I guess, to, that would potentially help out with that or address that?
Sam, we can also, as the architect, under our contract, we can offer additional services for increased site observation, that we're there more often, but there's still things that as the architect, we don't have the capacity to manage, things like safety, we can't accept any of that lightly, that's all on the contractor or the construction manager.
That's a good point, it's all under the general contractor. You get multiple packages, and you've got these guys all over the board, you can have a lot of lawsuits go through there with on safety.
Yeah, schedules.
It's a simple, it's as simple as you want to deal with multiple people, or just one. You want to put in one contractor, you get it done, because otherwise you get these multiple packages over here that you have to deal with. That's kind of what it boils down to. So I understand your headache, I understand, I'm trying to help you, Tyler, and what you, I think you can do without having to spend a lot of money over here for services, I don't think you get the benefit of, they can potentially hurt your overall budget that you want to do, because honestly, you build those baseball and softball fields, folks. Hopefully sooner than later.
Did you hear about Hillside, Des Moines? It's in the Mayfair one register, you're about a year ago. Hillside, that's going on. They had, the system you're looking at, that ended up in court, big time. School board sued all fourteen packages.
So one thing that, a couple things I wanted to comment about or ask about, first, you said something, Sam, that kind of stuck with me, because we think of this as one big project, I mean, it's one effort here, and I think sometimes we're trying to solve the whole thing with one solution. And I think, I think it would be interesting if we could take a look and say, you know what, and this is just for example purposes, I'm not suggesting this as, maybe those initial projects don't really require as much overhead as a CM would provide, but maybe there's some parts of it, or sometimes when that really is warranted, it would be worth our money. And maybe there's value in thinking about it, not just as one solution, excuse me, one solution to this. Secondly, I would prefer, I mean, I would just say as a board member that's asked to make a decision, I would prefer to see costs on both sides. It very well could be that at the end of the day, we decide that the extra money, though that would come with CM, might be worth it to us.
Right.
Or we might not, but it would be hard for me to feel real good about a decision if I didn't have those facts, you know, something that I can compare to, because it's kind of my first $14 million project, you know what I mean? And so, boy, I would hate to check off something on our list because of the overhead. Certainly, I don't want to bombard Lindsay, or, you know, there's options we can look at, but, you know, I don't know if he's saying this, but do I want to bombard Lindsay, and am I trying to take that off of his shoulder for a million dollars? I don't know.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, as an example, and I didn't, like, you know that's not the case, but I mean, but for this much money, yeah, you know, I mean, this is...
So I do think it's a discussion to have, so I don't disagree. I don't think now is the time to go into that.
No.
But I appreciate the different options that you're bringing up, and I appreciate that you guys have brought that to us, so I think that's really good to work through.
Yeah, I do.
Now, I gotta ask a question you're not going to ask me, and I'm going to help you out here. What if, what I just proposed, or Curtis just proposed, what if the CM beats the general? And that's supposed to be a trick question for me. Give it to them, now you're the general contractor. If Dallas Grimes would went the other way, saved a million, is that give it to them?
You get the benefit of either way, and you get the same dollars.
That's what we're wanting to stand on that. That's the CM process, that they keep telling you how great they are, and all their fees and everything else, the true architecture and every other, they beat what we're talking about here.
Yeah, right. So the challenge for us, the challenge for us is, just like what we did with the three CMs that came in, is trying to get that apples to apples, is, and this is nearly impossible because by law, well, it's a bid, it's not like you're gonna sit here and go, this is what it is, but what are all the different services that are packed in there and not in there versus doing the CM? And that's, that's what needs to be taken into account.
And I will tell you, there's overlap in that too, because they may have something for safety, but when they, you know, like the specs, we're required, whoever the bid package is required to throw on safety, right? So there's just questions you gotta ask, that's why I get back to what I originally, originally talked about this, is that they just want to give you a lump sum proposal, okay? The general contractors, by trade, they just want to do that. Period. I can argue all day with them, if you want me to, they just want to do that. How's the CM coming to you, I'd say, I can put, I'll give you a lump sum proposal. But our philosophy is that it cuts out people of the molenbachs, the Ames trenches, or maybe some other startup person that wants to get out of here and try and get in business, and a lot of times public workers, how you get into the business, right? Under our watchful eye and guys, that's how this process works. Process in the CM part of it shuts a lot of that stuff out, and it raises your prices. And we've seen this, we've documented it over the last eighteen years. As hard as it works with that dollar, to give you that $14 million bond up here, I love to have to make sure you have enough money at the end of the rainbow to build those things you want to build. That sacrifice, like almost already had to do, say, well, I gotta take some on my project, and we get the project in that budget. We see that over and over and over again.
Another food for thought, just Sam knows what I'm talking about, border plate or general conditions. That's gotta apply to every bid package, meaning what?
Every bid package has to have general conditions.
If I run the price, that's what I'm almost saying, but that's what some of the bonding we're talking about, and I didn't have the time to do this, but an expert over in Cedar Rapids, tonight, my insane position I'm in, ran out on about a $3 million project with a hundred bid packages, they figured the owner's paying under $20,000 in bond because they didn't see it's hidden. So there's a lot of things on both sides of it. We are a construction manager. Now, if I'm going to be in the construction manager, I'm going to get out of the general contracting business, because I don't think it's ethically right, or a cheap CM like theirs look over me and vice versa. If you hire me as a construction manager, I wouldn't want anybody around here, I'd feel guilty looking over them, because I'm capturing all their inside information. I'm filtering it to you the way I want to see it being filtered, which is ethically, for me, it's essentially wrong, the way it's going right now. You want to hire a CM, make sure he's out of the business, he's not a practicing general contractor. That's my biggest complaint, and they have divided our industry, they really have. Fifty percent of people like to get into it, they want to be GC, general contractor, and other ones want to do like us. They want to do what's fair for the owner, and not forget me, forget us. I'm doing it for taxpayers of value, and we've seen millions of dollars in our organization, just what we're just talking about. Now that guy come up to me and thank me for it. Millions of bucks. Paying a one million, paying one million for $3 million to work on two projects is me is outrating, I said, if I'm gonna make that kind of money, I want to be talking to you, I'd be down in Florida.
I have a question for you, do you think we'd have any trouble, you know, putting that all out in one bid package? Do you think we'd get multiple bids if we were to do that, in me one bid package?
Yeah, no, we did, we did the two, the scenario we're talking about, the Dallas Center Grimes, yeah.
Curtis, sir, Harold, why don't more districts do what you're talking about that DCG did, where they put the two together, compare the two? Maybe they do, I don't know.
We've been trying to get them to do it, but sometimes the fix is already in, I can say that.
Okay.
The CM was already allowed in a year ahead of time, we're just coming on now, so you probably talked to your CMs already, I have, for the first time we're here. So I think that's a disadvantage.
Yeah, well, I mean, we just wouldn't follow.
I'm just saying. A lot of times it's philosophical to be something that they very much will be locked in as part of it, and they bring the architect down. I said, I thought how you guys have done, you've done it right, and I always loved the school board and how you guys operate this district, which is why I put my kids in this district. I worked at the last school district before I had kids, so I had my choice. But I liked how you operated. So that being said, that's what I'm after, there's a lot of different avenues we're looking, we're trying to explain here, but I got, we look at the taxpayer's money, and as all of us being stores and the taxpayer's money, what's the best way to do it? And I think we've been showing you, we can document it, I've given you proof today, but you have an option, that's why I want to show you. You have an option, because I want to do your work, so if you want me to do your work, give me an option, give me the opportunity to show you what we can do. That's all, that's all I'm after.
Well, thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
I appreciate you reaching out. Yeah, loving us now.
Yep, any further questions, just get a hold of me here, Lindsay, you know, whatever.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks very much. Great presentation. See you again, thanks for...
Sam?
Yeah.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nice seeing you again.
Good to see you.
Wish you the best.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, girl. Thanks.
Hey, John.
Well, there's a lot to it.
There's a lot.
We've got guys running...
I took notes.
Nothing.
I originally wanted to...
It's what he never answers, and I just like it.
Yeah.
Camera's not, trying to figure out how to... We're going to be calling this, this is a discussion.
Good, it's good. You just sit and eat, dog.
That's what I'm just saying, it's going to create a lot of...
All right, all right.
Leadership training.
It's good, it's good. You just sit and eat, dog.
All right, all right.
And sir, see you around.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's all I'm going to say.
What's that?
Wow.
Yeah, well, it's good.
Yeah.
This is good to have the dialogue, right?
Yeah, good passion.
It's easy, easier to do pros and cons when you have two things to compare. Much easier, I think.
Greetings, team.
Uh-oh, you going to the game right after this?
I am.
What?
But, you know what, my sense of urgency is not very high. As long as Coach Brown doesn't need another body to go in, I'm all right, it'll be good.
I brought my tops and shorts.
Well, I'm just looking to see what cable I want to grab.
I have cable underneath.
Okay, see, he's down players.
I think he has six eligible players.
Pardon me?
Hopefully, nobody gets in foul trouble.
Yeah, I think Sard and Young hits, or, I think whether Bab is just shutting down for pain reasons or whatever.
Didn't he, one time, didn't that football player, I know I can't... You probably got to...
Where I want to set my...
I got to read the whole...
I have, but I've gone to three. I got to K U at home.
Baylor, Tennessee at home.
I can't...
That just took the wind out of my sails.
Butler, Hakeem Butler.
You may have to unplug the blue one to have control of it.
Which one, this one? You can have it, I'm serious.
No, Kim, did I?
I had, no. I had cheese, I had this, I got apple block on, so I'm good.
Oh, we're so close now, it's nice.
Well, so what we've, what I've done is I've just brought some examples of two things. So we can, we can present on whatever you like, what I, so this is your show, not mine, but what I, what I thought might be useful for your time is, if you've got questions, if there are things that you want to explore, if we can identify those and either whiteboard them, or I'll just take notes, and then we can navigate that material either just with explaining it or showing you some examples.
Yeah, yeah. I think it'd be good, and I think seeing this a couple of weeks ago, it was kind of really quick, it'd be nice to give you guys the chance to kind of lay it out a little bit more, but I know we've probably got some questions too, so let's make sure. And be mindful of tip-off time for some of you. Forty-five minutes, is that kind of what you're targeting?
Well, yeah, I just, we want to kind of have a debrief after...
We want to have a debrief, and you got something that says...
Folks have some folks...
So maybe forty-five minutes, and I'm sure we got about twenty minutes of questions, so feel free to kind of get us in the frame for the next twenty, thirty minutes, but let's leave some time for questions.
Certainly, okay. So, Adam, let's go, we won't go over the same presentation you saw unless you have questions. Yeah, so this is, very often, boards ask us to present, hey, what's the difference between design, bid, build, and construction management, and why would I do one versus the other? And so, these are, this is content that I've delivered to a number of school districts. So in our world of design and construction, these are called project delivery systems. So you still get a completed project when it's done, it's just how you choose to deliver it, how you bring the partners on board, and how you organize it. So I'm sure you just heard about design, bid, build, that's kind of the traditional method of making things happen. The contractual lines are real straightforward. You have a contract with an architect, you have a contract with a general contractor, the general contractor holds all of the subcontracts. The design timeline happens here, and the unique part of this delivery system is that the general contractor becomes familiar with your plans about a month before the bid. The plans get released, and that's when they start to get introduced to your project and what's going to happen. So this, the entirety of the pre-construction time horizon, there's no really contractor eyeballs on it helping with that. So some of its virtues, the owner selects the architect, the architect designs, contractors bid, project is awarded to the lowest bidder, so the lowest bidding contractor manages all the subs, and you go to work and you build it. It's real straightforward, you always know who wins, it's the little guy on bid day. A lot of projects get done that way successfully. Next. So, pre-construction happens without contractor input, so that goofy acronym up there is none of us is as smart as all of us.
That's a first, Mike, that's a first.
So Terry Pickett said that once, and I've never forgotten that. So it's done with the wisdom of the design team, but really without a lot of other wisdom from a contracting side. You're obligated to take the low bidder, you can pre-qualify, but you can't pre-disqualify people, so in other words, you can ask, you can ask for some pre-qualifying info, but if they have a bond and are non-ambulatory, I think I heard that word the other day, you have, you're obligated to use them. It should deliver the least first cost, in theory, and very often it does, it creates contractor focus. The big question is, is that first cost on the right thing? In other words, is it the right scope, is it, have you run value out of it, have you run value out of it? But we do a lot of work that way. So in a construction manager and scenario, it's a little bit different. You hire your architects, you hire a CM as a professional service, then you hold the bid package contracts. The unique thing here is that the construction manager gets involved early in the design phase, and as part of that pre-construction period facilitates bid day, and you're off to the races. So you select, the team works together, the owner contracts with all the suppliers, we, and subcontractors, we orchestrate the work, and the difference there, as a general contractor, we show up every day to deliver minimum requirements, plans, and specs, and to protect our profit. As a construction manager, we show up every day to protect your scope and protect your project. Profit is not our motive. Doesn't make us bad people in either case, it's just our vantage point is different. Next. So it's a professional service, CMs become an extension of your staff, not all CMs are created equally. There are some that are more focused on administrative process, there are some that are more focused on, hey, you know, we have people that build stuff every day that are going to be on your job. So not, that one label doesn't really identify the distinguishing qualities of all the different CMs. The contracts are all supported by bonds, in our view, it's really a shift of cost. You're paying a CM what you would otherwise pay a G C. The pre-con part of it is different, because you would either pay halo for that, or you would fly blind without that. So, and I've got some examples of things there for what that looks like. The CM really leads the workflow, and then the theory is that good team engagement helps your dollars go farther. That's the, that's the belief around it. Next. So, as a board, or a public entity of any sort, what do you think about when you're choosing? Because there's one, there are two different sort of philosophies to get you to the end. And so, as I was on the AM's board, or as you think about this, well, what questions should we be asking and answering? And does those help illuminate us in one direction versus the other? So which approach best complements the staff we have to execute the project? Whether it's your facility staff, your central office staff, your building principals, do they have the game for that, or do we need to keep them focused on what they're doing and hire some help? Which provides the best chance for predictable outcome? Which gives us the most value as we determine it? Am I prepared to live with more than one contract? How much value is there in having an expert and a project leader in my camp that I choose? Which system's going to be the most attractive to the market for this project? How complicated is the phasing and execution? How much, how much open-heart surgery are we doing here versus just sort of taking a mole off over the prairie? During design, how many, I'm sorry, that was, that was a bad, when I said it, it didn't sound very good.
I've only had one of those, but it's a good...
Do you want to strike that?
Okay. During design, how many options do I want to understand? What do we think will have the most impact? And then what do I want to know to help me, help me pick a path in it? It feels like you're kind of, you're at that fork in the road where, hey, you know what? For these reasons, we need to head this way, or for these reasons, we're going to head that way. So I think invariably, people want to get into the comparative, well, which is cheaper? Well, which is more, well, how do I know, and how do I know? And the fact is, you won't, because you never do the same thing twice. Every, every construction project's a prototype. And so, you choose more based on a philosophy and a circumstance than a proven outcome, because I can show you proof of great outcomes both ways. Next, I think, so I think these are really the keys to a successful project, really strong leadership, open communication, transparency. I'm glad to give you all of, all of these slides. Just relationships built on trust, understanding that construction's a local business and what makes sense in this market. So, I pop up, Adam, I was going to use these as circumstance, but they're kind of interesting. So pop up the Norwalk estimate. So we just bid a project today at Norwalk, new elementary school at three o'clock. And we're, the CM on that project, and so we've been going through the pre-construction phases on that, and today was bid day, so we can share you, with you the bid results, what that looked like.
The bid tab?
Uh, no, the breakdown, yeah. So you might wonder, and Sam and Art have seen some of these kinds of things before.
Can you see that?
No. So if you scroll across the tabs and then scroll left to right, so you wonder, boy, what happens in pre-construction? And why would I pay for that, and why and how is it useful? So down here, you can see all of these different tabs we did for a new elementary school down in Norwalk that bid today. So there's some public improvements, so things that we're not involved with, or the school district isn't per se, but things that are going to be attentive and part of the project, so there's some record-keeping there. Then here, this is short descriptors for bid packages, budgets that we have there for a design development estimate. Now scroll right, Adam, and scroll up so we can see what that is. So we went through a value engineering reconfiguration, number one. So we're testing that versus here, and what are the over-unders? What's happening to the cost and scope of the job as we're looking at different configurations? Keep going to the right, that's maybe it there. So just click on a few tabs, just for, just for giggles, to see, you know, there's a lot of analysis, there's a lot of work that goes into trying to maximize value and find value in that. And Sam and his design team do some of that, but they do it a lot from a lot more informed perspective with a lot more detail this way.
So with that as an example, Mike, I mean, what, how would you assess the outcome that you had at three o'clock?
So we'll go to that.
Okay.
That's the other document? Yep. So the short answer is that it was really good, but let me, let me tell you about that, because there's a story to it. So scroll down, Adam, or make it a little bit smaller, so... So the...
Can't see it now.
So the budget was fifteen-nine, and the bid results came in today at thirteen-eight. Yeah, so it's a good day. DT McGee had a good day, Kate Baldwin had a good day, they had a good day. And there was a lot of work that went into this, because when we were initially budgeting this job, it was going to exceed that budget. And so, we worked with the district, worked with the design team, found some square footage, reconfigured some things, moved the building on the site up closer to the road, pared back some of the site circulation to still keep them, give them some requirements, took some collaborative spaces, and we moved them to the perimeter of the building to make them alternates as opposed to requiring them to be as part of it. The design changed quite a, quite a bit. All of that said, we still, we came in well, well under budget. So there was some scope wrangling that I think they're really glad for, because they've got needs in the other elementary school, and the middle school, and high school that still need to be attended to, so this gives them a little room to breathe. So I can show you my text messages from the district, but they're, they're really jazzed. So to maybe further expand on this, so what did bid day look like? So that's the summary of results, just go to bid tab two point one. So this is the, this is the site work bid package. So we had one, two, three, four, five, six plan holders, five of them showed up to bid today. And Sandstone, looks like they were at one point seven. So one of the things about, oh, I guess we had five bidders, because that's the budget. So one of the things about CM that you have access to, and some people like that and some don't, is you see behind the curtain, you see the Wizard of Oz. So in a design, bid, build scenario, you just see the big number, and you say, wow, that's really exciting, or wow, that's not. But you never really know the details of what comprises it. In a CM role and process, you do. So in this case, our budget was one point nine. You can see we had three bids that were just slightly over that, and then Sandstone was quite a little bit less than that. So, Adam, if you come down here, so it was about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars under budget on that. But if that bidder hadn't showed up, it'd be the other way around. So the goal of budgeting is never to be, we don't want to be the low bidder. You don't want to be making decisions based on hope and, oh, hope it's, hope it's a good day, hope there's not an ice storm, I hope people find this project attractive. So we want to be probably closer than thirteen percent under, but we don't want to be the low bidder.
But in this case, do you go out and solicit those? I mean, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, and four of them put in bids. And you actively go out and say, hey, guys, come to the table?
Yes.
So in a G C mode, they've got to go out and find folk, because they're putting in one bid for everything, so that if they already talked to all of those folks, or some of those folks...
So what happens, you don't have Wi-Fi in here, do you?
Learning is... Like lightning-fast Wi-Fi?
You can just talk.
Yeah, so Adam, if you pop it up, I'll explain it. So if Sam and Art put a project out on the street, it hits our, it hits the industry, and everybody knows it's out to bid. And so, general contractors will generally... This one? Will generally get bids.
It's still the same?
Yeah.
Is it a capital L?
No.
No?
All lowercase.
Don't knock outside the door, huh?
You can get a Wi-Fi, but you can't make phone calls.
Okay.
High security.
There's no cell service there.
So do you ever get into Iceberg with Adam, or no? I do. So try and get into that, and if you don't get into that, go to Iowa Bid Date online.
Let's just go over there.
Iowa Bid Date, Iowabiddate.com. So...
Dilly-dilly.
Oh, I was thinking more like a dating service, but yeah.
Just Iowa Bid Date.
Iowa Bid Date?
Yeah. So our industry does a pretty good job of promoting. Sam lets people know, hey, it's out there. So contractors, subcontractors, and general contractors are scrubbing the landscape. Hey, what's coming up, what looks interesting? But Sam might make a few phone calls, but otherwise, people are just, they're choosing. There's really no great advocacy out there. And if Sam and Art are making phone calls, they're making phone calls to the general contractor saying, hey, this is out there, you should take a look, hey, this is out there, you should take a look. Nobody's really calling the subcontractors. Maybe the general contractors are notifying them, hey, we're looking, we want you to look, something like that. So there's, there's a natural cascade and inertia that happens in the industry, so that's how people learn of it. In a CM case, we're the ones picking up the phone, calling all of these subs, hey, this project is out there, so we're advocating for the project, and we're exposing them to it, and not relying on kind of the hodgepodge of the industry to do it. So there are ways to do this. This is kind of an interesting thing, so when you choose your bid day, so there's some art and science to a bid day. There's not a lot of jobs that bid on Wednesdays. Frankly, we don't, we don't suggest you bid a job on a Wednesday at three. Bid days are typically Tuesdays and Thursdays at two o'clock, that's what the industry is used to. Well, our association has set up, set up this site, so Adam, go ahead and click on tomorrow, just for giggles. Well, our association has set up, set up this site, so Adam, go ahead and click on tomorrow, just for giggles.
Oh, this is awesome.
I feel like we should be laughing.
Yeah. So as a way to help the industry coordinate its bid dates, so 10 schools are not bidding on the same day, competing for the attention of all the contractors. I'm sure Sam and Art use this, and we monitor this to see the county in which things are happening, maybe who the owner or the entity is, what kind of project it is, where it is, so we can try and spot bid days about 6 to 8 weeks out, so we're hopefully finding a slot that is, that's out there. And we do that as a CM, really to make sure that we're trying to not compete with the attention of the subs, so they can be fully focused on that job that day.
But a GC, again, a GC, if there's 15 different subs within a given project, they're putting in 1 bid, and they're making some assumptions about all those projects, correct? Or have they actually gone out and said, okay, I want you to do this, I want you to do that, can we do it for this amount?
Yeah, so when we're a GC, and we bid a job, bid day is the day where we accumulate the industry's input. And if there's a hole, we fill it. And we usually fill it healthily, because holes are risk, and so we'll put some money, we'll put what we feel is adequate money in there for it. But bid day is typically the industry's accumulation of what they think the job is, as opposed to me and Adam sitting with a pencil, figuring everything out, submitting a bid, and then going shopping later to hope that we can honor this bid.
Okay, so it's in arrears?
Yeah, it's really, it's kind of the same process, it's a similar process. We don't speculate, we'll only speculate if there's a hole, or if we feel like, boy, you know, there's only 1 masonry bid, and they think it's worth a million bucks, and we think we can buy it for 600, we might hedge, we might do something. But in a CM scenario, if you only got that 1 bid, and it was a million-dollar bid, it would not be your obligation as a district to accept it. You'd say, hey, our advice says we think we can buy that more competitively, we need to reject that bid, we can award the rest of these, we can get this party started, we can amend that scope however we need to, and then take it back out. So that way, if your project is over budget, it generally doesn't mean that everything is over budget. It just means there's 1 or 2 things, probably. So the CM approach with exposure to where all the cost is allows you to accept those things that are fine, identify those things that need to be figured out, and go figure those things out, and not throw literally the baby out with the bathwater.
So I did pop up, I scored footage, there's anything?
Yeah, Adam, can you go to Norwalk? You go to that?
I can go to our Norwalk page.
Okay, so this is, this is a tool that the industry uses. We use it as a CM, GCs use it as well. So this is one of the ways in which we promote that, hey, we're bidding, and we'd like to get bids from you. So go to bidders and packages up here. Yeah, so there you can see all the people that were plan holders, et cetera, et cetera. So does that warm you up enough? I mean, your questions are great, I'd rather respond to those than...
That's probably where we wanna go next.
I have a question, just in seeing some of these. So you had that slide before that showed where a GC comes in at this point of the design, the pre-construction. And we, we've always looked, I think, at construction management as well. It's a little less on burden on us. How much involvement, though? That pre-construction is a good amount of work, I would think, wouldn't it be? To make sure everybody's on the same page, and, I mean, would you consider, like, I say to us, but our representatives are pretty, are spending a good amount of time doing that phase? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would say that it's no more or less from a staff burden, from your perspective, whether it's a GC or a CM.
In pre-construction.
In pre-construction.
In the pre-construction, that's what I was talking, because I wondered if that meant it was heavy up there, you know? If that's where you're making a lot of decisions and potentially scope exchanges, or whatever you'd say, I would expect that either somebody there has to know really well what we would go for, and what we wouldn't go for.
Right, and that, I'll say...
I know it saves money upfront to do that.
I'll say that's really an exchange between your staff and your admin folks, and maybe a few committee members that would be happening with Sam and Art on their team without us, or it would be happening with us. I think it happens with a little more granularity in terms of the info with us, but either way, the lift is pretty similar, I think, I'd say.
But your example with Norwalk was, well, it was essentially a new set of eyes on it that's also in that industry, that then, okay, have the dialogue, it sounds like with the architects, say, well, what if you put it on the perimeter rather than here, and have some of those conversations?
Yep.
I mean, that's that, so how long, on the Norwalk project, how long did you have in that pre-construction phase with the architect to get to that point?
Probably 6 to 8 months. So that was, and so there are a few tasks at Norwalk. That's a brand-new elementary school. And then there's gonna be some renovations to the middle school and to the high school, and some further renovations in another elementary school. So it's a little bit of a continuum there, but the first focus was the elementary school, and that sets the wheels in motion for some shifting and moving to create some spaces for kids to be able to be taught and work to be able to happen.
So we'll go into questions, are we good to do that?
Yep.
I'll just rattle off a few, then. So you kind of use the CM model in a way, say, well, we ensure, or we work towards no holes. I mean, you flipped around and say, well, if you're putting it out for subs, then all of a sudden, there is actually a hole. Nobody bid on that, and because it's not a GC, now there isn't anybody for drywall or for 1 portion of the project. Talk a little bit about that, the, because we talked, I think, when you were in here before, about what is the availability of labor, you know? So talk a little bit about the holes as you get down to the subs, and...
Sure.
Are we better off with the CM route, are we better off with the GC route? Because a GC would take care of that, and have to figure out what to do, as opposed to having a hole.
Right, so there are probably 2 kinds of holes that could exist. One hole is the one you're describing, hey, nobody shows up. And today, we had all categories covered. That's pretty common. But occasionally, yeah, we'll, we, somebody, we won't get bids on something, so we need to re-advertise, we need to go out, we'll get them, we'll get them. So there won't end up being a hole there. But bid day is not always perfect, so there can be some irregularities in how people fill out bid forms, or some goofy things, or occasionally a hole, or some diminished interest. But eventually, that closes. The second kind of hole could be, hey, the way you identified these scopes and the specifications, you know, this item of work isn't covered in this bid package or this one, and so we have this gap. And so, yeah, that, that doesn't, I can't say that's never happened to us, but it doesn't happen very often. We have a real thorough, rigorous process to be able to do that. If that happens, it's really no different than, well, if that happens, then yeah, we identify that hole, we get pricing for that, and we, it was never in the job to begin with, and so it becomes processed as a change, and gets amended, and gets added. Same, the same thing could be true if there's a design error or omission, like, oh my gosh, we never had that in the job. Yep, same, we process that the same way. Hopefully, with a construction set of eyes in partnership with the district and the design team, we help to close those holes before they get open.
Do you guys offer, to speak to that, excuse me, Tyler, to speak to that, do you guys offer assistance during the design phase in terms of us writing our specifications to close those holes? In terms of either shifting some scopes to certain parts of different specifications? Or do you help, do you help create those packages by assisting us in even creating a division of labor packages?
Do you go to the VPN? Yeah, so Adam, Adam will try and find an example. So as a practical matter, how this looks, because Iowa will produce the same specification that they would produce if the job was a GC job. It will look no different. We'll add 1 section in the general conditions called the, I'll call it the bid package index, but we have a much more solid name for it than that.
Summary of multiple bid packages.
Summary of multiple bid packages. So in there, it's somewhere between 20 and 40 pages, where we literally map every piece of work in the project to a specific bid package. So when these, when we got bids today on the site work, for example, or on that bid package 2-1, it was for the scope as it was defined. The bidders don't have the opportunity to say, hey, we like most of that work, except for this 1 thing, so we're gonna exclude it. No, they can't do that. That becomes a non-responsive bid. And so, so part of our process is, and it takes 2 to 3 weeks of literally linearly mapping every piece of scope to a bid package in the front end of the specs to be able to do that.
Do you wanna pull up Norwalks, or just...
I don't care, just pick one.
So I'll go to the Marshalltown. Mike, on a, while we're getting there, do we ever limit ourselves going to construction management route by having a sub that can't bid because they're not bonded?
To say never would be an exaggeration, but not likely. So there are some that would choose not to bond.
And so in a CM approach, then they just would not be able to participate?
Yeah, that's their choice. Almost anybody in this environment can get a bond, it's just more of whether they wanna go through the process, whether they have a relationship to get one, or they wanna go through the process to get one. But it doesn't become much of a limitation for, for people. And so show this, and then go back to the, to the bid packages.
So this is just, I'll say, the bid package for concrete foundation and flatwork, so there's a bunch of, I'll say, maybe general requirement clarification notes up front, but then as you get into each specific, there are clarification notes of...
Contractors shall provide and install the masonry foundation dowels, yada, yada, for bid package 4.1. So we sort of build it mentally and verbally, identify it, and...
And we spell out what this person should include, and not the other guy.
So Adam...
A lot of detail there, right, David?
Love that.
So Adam, go back to the...
Please tell me this is automated, do you guys type all this in?
Yeah. Every project is different.
Yep, so go back to the bid results from today.
She writes the software.
Go to 6.1. So this is, there's a general carpentry package, so, and we can go back to the overall summary, but Tyler, this maybe gets at some of your question, too. So all of, all of these bid packages are large enough, and consequential enough, and interesting enough for people to want to go, that have bonding relationships, or want to go get bonds to be able to play. There's a caulking guy somewhere that is inside of this bid scope, that is not a separate package, that can't, maybe can, maybe can't get bonds, maybe wants to, maybe doesn't. We don't eliminate that guy from playing. We just say, we're gonna roll you up inside of a scope that has some meat on it, so you can participate. Because it's not in our interest to, or yours, for us to break your project into 50 packages. We wanna have some healthy packages, but the other thing is that we don't wanna have to reach through somebody to get down to where the work is happening. We wanna have pretty good access to it. So to say that somebody just chooses not to do it because they don't want to, that could absolutely happen, but we try and organize the packages in a way to have the full field available.
Then that particular prime then adopts some of that responsibility of that sub who could not get bonded, or didn't wanna get bonded. So they then adopt that bonding responsibility.
Under the heading.
Underneath the building, or in that case, grab off instruction.
Because everyone who's contracted with the district must be bonded as per law.
So, but they could have subs under them, they take responsibility for it.
So they then themselves, then they could act as a general contractor with a couple other subs under them, potentially.
Okay, I gotcha.
So Adam, if you go to the bid summary here again, so we gave you just a quick snapshot of what things might look like here. In the case of this brand-new school, you can see, and it's hard to read, but we had this many bid packages, they're broken down across industry lines generally. You can see what the bid amounts were, so there's some decent consequence on this. The athletic flooring is kind of a specialty that doesn't make sense to roll up into everybody, but, I mean, you can see that there's some decent meat on that bone.
So I have a question about this. In this model, you are, you're acting as an advisor to the district, right, as a service that we pay? And then the accountability as to getting the work done is now split to 21, I don't know how many, sorry, 18 individuals and companies, right? So like, if something's not going right, there's 18 of these people that are possibly responsible for it, as opposed to say, like, is this all rolling up into kind of 1 entity or 1 group? And how, and like, what, what sort of challenges arise between sort of like, in your advisor role, and then spread out with all of this accountability across, I don't know, 15 people or so?
Adult members.
Yeah, like, so something's not going right, you know, like, who's accountable, yeah, in that sense? And I'd just love to hear, like, how does that practically work out? Because obviously, all these things can get messy from time to time, right? Like, how does all this work out?
Yeah. One of the things that helps us is we're a GC and we're a CM. So we've got relationships with all of these folks, and then many, many more. And so they're gonna see us again. And so the industry's pretty small, and nobody wants to be the fly in the ointment, so...
Is that the mole?
No, I'm getting away from body parts, I'm getting away from body parts. So nobody wants to be that. Generally speaking, the community, construction community in central Iowa plays pretty harmoniously. Secondly, every project always has weak link, always does.
Yep.
And whether they're separate contract, whether they're part rolled up under another contract, helping them get to the finish line is the only way out. There can be yelling, and screaming, and table beating, and table pounding, and all of that, and that won't get things done. So there's, our teams and our people like Adam and our superintendents, their job is to help people get to the finish line, and to get you the scope that is required by the job. And that, that's true whether we're your GC, or whether we're your CM. So the question isn't, are there, is there gonna be weak link? Yep, is there gonna be some heartburn? Yep. Generally speaking, without regard to who holds what contract, the industry figures it out. It doesn't, it doesn't feel different. If I took you to one of our CM jobs, and you saw the rapport, and the plan, and the ways in which our team interacted with the bid package contractors, or if I took you to a GC job, it would be indiscernible to you which one was which. So what can get people's attention? Well, you can withhold payment, yeah, that gets people's attention. Does that inspire them to wanna do better, or is it just hack 'em off? I don't know.
And that's so different between a CM job or a GC job. We, as architects, can manage and govern and help the board govern how often or when someone gets paid. That's part of our responsibility as well, to assess the work that has been completed, does their pay application measure up to that? Or is there something outstanding that we need to kind of put the screws to him on, and so therefore, hold potentially... And so therefore hold, potentially hold that payment as a motivator. So that happens either GC or CM.
Yeah, I hear that's good.
Yes, but I think to Brian's question, and I expand, so whether it's quality or time, right? So you've got both of those written into your requirements.
Yeah.
Then who, who is accountable and who does drive that?
Ultimately, ultimately, the bid package contractors are the ones that are accountable for, for their quality. If they, if they don't meet the quality requirements, they need to, they need to fix it. If, if we're your GC and we're contracted with a masonry contractor and they're not meeting the requirements, we're going to make them meet the requirements. Now, Sam will be squaring, squaring us up, or you guys will be squaring us up as the GC. He'll square us up too as a CM and say, gosh, how can you let the, how can you let these guys, you know, get away with this, which, which we can't. The, I'm not trying to shirk the accountability question because clearly as a GC, I mean, you can point the finger and say, we're withholding your payment. We're going to sue you. We're going to do this. You gotta, you gotta make this right. Well, the fact is, whether we're GC or we're a CM, the industry right now depends so much on the way the team functions and so much on the way that the team gets work done. Like if you told me as a GC, I don't care what you do, you get out there and lay brick. Well, the last thing you want me doing is laying brick. Now, I go...
It's not going to be real pretty.
No, I can go find another bricklayer and I can do so on my own nickel. In a CM model, so we've got bonds for all these guys. And if the mason's not doing his job, a measure of recourse that, that, that you have that we can execute on your behalf is to contact the bonding company and say, hey, it's going very well, so we need for you to intercede and do one of two things. Capitalize this company and get them stable or pay the difference for what it takes for us to bring somebody else in and make this work right or make this work right.
So there is contractual application of a CM to help manage and govern and coordinate all those different jobs. So even though there's no potential risk to the CM for that accountability, there's still contractual language that enforces some of that accountability, right? Is that...
I think too, like to expand on Tyler's expansion of what I was saying, this is fun, is like, how do we make sure, right, that Lindsay's not running around like a maniac managing 18, 16 different things and like, you know, like he's already well overworked. Or any, pick anybody on our staff, right? They're doing education stuff. And so how do we trivialize that? This is probably the last thing you do, sorry. But like, right, like how do we, it's real, like that's the thing is like, is that, again, I like how you're talking about accountability versus just like getting stuff done and the practical implications of all this stuff. Is the sense that like getting, getting the work done regardless of sort of like clean lines of accountability is the work of, part of the work of a construction manager?
It is, it is. So it's, it's when we gave you the ballpark proposal that we gave you in the first, that's really for our staff, for our team, for our effort to be your advocate.
Got it.
So it's, it, it is your assurance that Lindsay's not running around or any of you volunteer board members are not running around like crazy people trying to chase things down. You know, and you'll, you'll have your hand somewhat on the lever of that in terms of, hey, we need this, we need some more staff or hey, can we, can we dial it back a little bit? Where in a GC scenario, you have no assurance that the GC will staff the job at all. Now, you would hope people would, but there, there are plenty of cases where the low bid has a staff member that maybe stops by a couple hours a day, maybe a couple of days a week, something like that. And it's more of an open gym exercise for the subcontractors that show up. And then, and then it's, then you as a district have a decision to make. Well, do we hope that works out or do we insert, you know, do we insert some resources there to try and stabilize that because we're adding to all of our buildings? And we've got a school that, you know, we need to hold classes on on August 23rd and we can't, we don't have the luxury of letting that sort of work itself out. We got, we got school to hold.
Mike, one of the things that you see in this is the reimbursables that are, that you have there. Can that, when I, when I think of reimbursables, I think that, that you could see some cost shifts. Is there any way to lock some of those in more than just keeping them wide open?
So, not, not really these. So Adam, go to the Bondurant customer. So we're working down on Bondurant and I'll give you an idea of what the, it's a PDF document. I'll give you an idea of what that board sees every month. And I'll talk a little bit about big package five, which is where some of the reimbursables are.
Cost number?
Yeah. So the Bondurant board sees this on a monthly basis. This was their January report. So here's a, a listing of the bid packages. Here's the...
Oh, you're doing a good job with the laser.
Initial contracts, yeah. Changes, current contract amount, paid up through, so on and so forth. So come on down, Adam, and go to the left so I can see. So here we get into temporary facilities budget. So our, our CM services are listed here and it's basically the compilation of all the breakdown that, that we've given you, just rolled up into this in a summary. So this temporary facilities budget, we often refer to as big package five. So what is that? Well, that's the dumpsters on the project. That's the porta johns. If there's a temporary fence, if there's temporary water, temporary electric, those, those kinds of things. So we create a budget allocation for those. And that, that, and that flows through us. So at Bondurant, we're paying for the dumpsters. And every month, we summarize that bill and we submit that bill to reimburse us for that. That's not marked up. There's no profit on that. That's just a pass-through cost. So by doing that, those temporary measures for the job are provided to the job as needed, but we're not forcing anybody to guess on those. So if we're the GC, we have to guess, hey, we're going to have 20 dumpsters. And then, oh, we only have 15, so we're enriched by that. Or we have 25 and we're sad by that. So I, if that's what you're talking about, these reimbursables, which, which were not part of our initial proposal, but this is part of that too. So one of the features of having a CM is you, you support the job in the way in which it needs to be supported. Somebody's monitoring that, but the big package contractors are not guessing at that. So can it be more? Can it be less? Typically, we estimate this fairly conservatively and we come in a little less. I don't know, I don't know if that's going to, that's going to come in and spot.
So that's, that also frees up a service that, that each bid package might have to provide otherwise. So they don't have to add a handful of dumpsters or...
Yeah, there are some, there are some GCs that on bid day, they'll take everybody's subs, they take everybody's numbers, then they'll issue the subcontract. And they'll say, okay, Mr. Drabwaller, here's your subcontract for this amount. And oh, and by the way, for that privilege, you get to provide two dumpsters and two months of porta potty and so on and so forth. And then, and then they're like, ah, that's crazy. That somebody should do, GCs should do that, or in this case, the CM should do that. Does that answer your reimbursement?
Yes, thank you.
So that, I'm just looking at this one now. Now I'm curious because you, that is, this payment for this temporary facilities budget is, was in that original bid, right?
Their estimate.
Your estimate, right? Because that's a lot higher.
Right, so it's not, it's not...
That's not here.
No, go back to then our presentation that we gave them and we'll, we'll back up to that. So scroll down, scroll down. So this job site, office and support. So these are, I'll say, these are the minimalist requirements that we need just for housing and support to do the job. So this is not the dumpsters and potties. No, no, this, yeah, this is a really modest amount and, and it should be a real modest amount. And the, I'll say, these are the things necessary to support the CM, not necessary to support the job.
The job.
These things, if we're the GC, I'm telling you, those are part of our project cost as well as all the reimbursable items, so porta potties and dumpsters. It all gets paid for through the...
So the reimbursables really aren't in that number there, that 768?
No.
But that was like $400,000, right? Okay. Did I say that right? Let me see. Okay.
And that, and in that case, at Bondurant, the scope of that job is a major classroom wing addition to the high school and a performing arts center on the other side of the high school. But again, that, those costs are not self-fulfilling prophecies. It, it's a, it's a budget placeholder based on experience, based on the duration and needs of the job and whatever ends up at the end.
Are some of those costs included in your number here somewhere, Mike? The reimbursable item, like a, okay.
No, because those are all really job circumstantial and specific. Yeah, this is just, this is the trailers to be able to support it. Just, I mean, a modest, modest amounts really, really everywhere to be able to...
Sam, would that have been part of our bid? Would we have that kind of cost figured into, you know, when we put together the...
When we put our cost opinions together, yeah, that, that would be, some of those things would be included in that.
That's where some of the shift comes. It's, it's here, it's inside of this number, but now it's broken out and exposed, but it still needs to carry its weight.
Did you, somebody, what do I have here? And if you've already talked about this, I apologize. I just need to ask it this way. So when you have a CM, it's possible that, obviously, we can't hold the CM. A CM can't hold us harmless, right? There's more of a liability on our part with a CM? Could somebody help me understand what that meant? If I went, if we went with a GC, then that GC holds us harmless, right?
Maybe you could explain the difference between CM at risk or CM agent.
What, what liability are we accepting on that part of it? I'm not clear about that.
Yeah, so, so Adam, go to the design bid build scenario. So from, from a risk profile perspective, I don't, I don't think it's materially different. So from, from the contract risk part of it, you have a contract with the GC and there's contract language in there about insurances and, and risk allocation, dispute resolution, all of that. You'll have a contract with a CM that will have a lot of that language in it. That language will also be included in all of your bid package contracts. So you'll have, you know, 15 bid package contracts or whatever that is. And there's a lot of boilerplate language in there that your legal counsel will cook and bake out with us and with you. So I think the risk profile is, is covered one, one way or another, whether it's done through a singular contract or whether it's done through a, a bunch of contracts that cover essentially the same scope.
Okay, so, so although the CM doesn't hold us, we're, doesn't hold that for us at risk, the, those under them that are doing the bids essentially do that.
Yeah. So to Art's point, no, that, that's fine where you had it. So CM agency is really the, the only widely permitted delivery system in the state of Iowa that public entities can use to, other than design bid build. And so you pick your partner and you hold all the contracts. The university region system are using a little bit on a pilot basis and most private owners would use a CM at risk model. And so it would resemble this very much in the way of contracts. So you hire an architect, you hire a GC, they hold all the subcontract. In that case, it's a CM at risk. The CM at risk gets plugged in a lot more up here to be able to do that. And then, and then they execute, we, we execute a very similar process. Bid day looks very similar and we just sign up all the, all the subcontractors. It's just unfortunately not a permitted system in the state of Iowa for public, public entities.
Just to summarize that a little bit of the answer to your question, the, the same amount of, same dollar amount of liability that the, that you guys would hold is the same. It's just either singular or it's spread over multiple contracts.
Okay. That helps, I wasn't, when I heard that phrase, I thought, wait, that makes sense. Just different way of doing it.
Any other question?
Do we already ask what if a project goes over schedule? I assume, since these are, just keeps going, the costs just keep going per month. Obviously, it's not a fixed rate.
Right, so, so the, all the bid package contract amounts are fixed. Our staff time and some of the support time, yeah, that's variable. So if it comes and we come in faster, we don't burn up all that staff time or all those reimbursables, it's not a cost to incur. Likewise, if, if it runs long, yeah, there's additional costs. So what we typically do, so the fee amount that we agree on, it just stays, it just stays fixed. So it doesn't, that scale, once we really understand the scope of the job, we'll fix, we'll fix that amount. So it doesn't, it doesn't become variable. So there can be some variability with staff and, and the times related to that.
Okay. That's all I have, sorry.
Well, thanks for coming in.
Hopefully, the examples were helpful.
Timely, I mean, 3:00 this afternoon.
Yeah, well, so the Bondurant thing, some of the estimate things, but yeah, this is, if I was you, well, why does this really look different? And what am I getting for that? And do I feel good about all that granularity or does it scare me? Here's what it looks like, so.
Yeah.
Brought back memories from a few years ago.
Flashbacks?
I didn't say nightmares.
Good, well, thanks for having us.
Yeah, thank you guys, this is good.
Thanks, Mike.
Got it.
You had 10 minutes, you had to do it.
Thanks for coming in, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will you?
When is it literally starting?
Exactly, it never does.
Yep, good question. Good, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, Lindsay.
Good job. That's usually what I...
Adam, scroll down, can you get over this after?
How you did a great job.
So Adam was working on two of the things this afternoon. I'm like, hey, I'll just put all the stuff on a stick and...
Yeah. Smart plan.
If I can navigate, you can drive.
Yeah. That's what we did. Mouth and the laser were well synchronized.
Yes.
No, it's kind of like figure skating. You guys do in the Winter Olympics before years from now, the two of you is looking great.
I gotta dial back my metaphors.
Yeah. Just have some goals in there, man.
That's right, you're still on.
Yeah, it's a public meeting, everyone's listening in. All two. Do you want to take that with you?
Are we going to get all get these?
I think we should all have.
Those are, okay. Yeah, I don't want to be probably...
Oh, but these are coming back now. I don't even mind, I think this is...
I don't like, I think I already have one from a while back.
Apparently, they didn't think we had enough.
They send more. Thank you. Yeah.
A box came in the mail.
So we're having a small little debrief session now, just for fun? Or is there a particular like thing that we need to work through and talk through?
I think just, yeah, a debrief session to talk maybe through pros and cons and, and likely not decide tonight on which direction to go. We might want to ask for some additional information so we can decide on what that could or should be as part of this process here. So we also want to maybe wrap up with a couple of next steps, like how do we, how do we move them all forward in this whole, this whole process? So I guess just what, what, what you guys, what kind of resonates with, with each of you for each delivery method? And does one or the, does one or the other rise to the top? And if so, maybe why?
If I'm not thinking about money, just for a minute, I think the construction management concept is something that resonates with me a little bit more. I think in terms of that, that time spent up front can, you know, what, what's the saying? A dollar up front saves you 10 bucks down the road? That kind of work makes sense to me. I don't know how much that costs. Did I just, you know, I, I, I think it makes sense, but...
I was often...
Perspective.
Good, good question. I was often told, you're going to, you're going to put the time in, into a project in terms of a design sense and answering questions and figuring out the problems and issues. One or the other, you either do it before you get started or you do it after you get started. And the, the big difference is it costs a lot less if you figure it out before you start swinging the hammer, right? So that, because if you don't have it all figured out, you're going to have to figure it out before it... it out before it gets finally constructed and it's just more costly on this backside.
And you, at a point where you still have choices too. I think the further you go down the path, then some of your choices are off the table. So, I mean, I'm just saying from that perspective, that's something that resonates with me and is some, is worth something.
Yeah, that's right.
I was also worried initially about that, the idea of bidding, if one was, you know, more conducive with like a lot, one that got a lot more bids or one that was maybe.
It really didn't sound like that.
It didn't sound like there was.
People who are restricted did it when he was talking about that. And that was, I think that's important.
Yeah.
Because, you know, as well as I do, that we have different, you know, vendors that are out there, that was interesting to listen to him say that, so.
Yeah, that's an interesting way to, to address that issue of someone who might be excluded because of a lack of bond or you just don't want to get bonded, you know, because it costs money. And if they're doing a good job, they don't need an insurance provider to cover them, so be it, you know. Pleasantville Elementary just wrapped up the CM and there were 15 bid packages. And there was a number of those bid packages that were all won by a contractor, a singular contractor. It was the general trades package, the foreign contract, ceilings, drywall and finishes. And it was all in, that was a single contract with a GC out of Southern Iowa. They just rolled up folks that couldn't get bonded underneath them. And it just so happened that they won all of the, all of those different packages. So it was, it was actually kind of nice that we, even though we technically have 15 different bid packages, there's actually like eight different contractors on site. One of them just happens to hold like six or seven individual contracts, yeah. So that, and I wasn't, I, I knew that every contractor has to be bonded, I know that that's the case, but being able to fold in a non-bonded one underneath a bonded contractor suffices that, that state law. So you can still get the good, the good contractors, the mullebox, the local folks who don't necessarily want to bond, you can still fold them in on some or some, that's, that's a good, I think there's a good clarifier there.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've kind of been clear on the questions and kind of conversations is I really think we need to have folks representing the district in this process. And in addition to our architects, I mean, that, that was my big take home from the previous project.
Right.
And I would say, and I really appreciated Pike coming in. And it was interesting to me how some of the recommendations were, well, you could maybe do it this way, hire somebody to be an owner's rep or do, and to me, it's either you do it or you don't, right? Because what we want is somebody that that's, that's what they wake up in the morning and that's what they're doing. So, so I think, so I think to me, that's a real big driver, especially as we look at the long list of projects, however they're bundled up.
Yeah.
I do think that we need to get more and more comfortable with, well, what are the costs? We are responsible for the costs here. But there's likely to be, you know, I think if, if I were to say a next step, it would just help us with, there's gonna be additional costs, I believe, going the CM route. But I also believe we want some of those services. And I don't think we want to cut it short by, by choosing kind of a partway.
Right.
An in-between kind of solution.
Owner's rep.
So I'd, I guess I'd like to continue to understand, okay, what, what do we really think the additional cost would be? Because you did a nice job of putting this list together from the three CMs that we interviewed. But some of that cost would be inside of a GC if we went the GC route, but not all of it. So how much of that would be in a GC? And how much of we really, do we think we're paying for the pre-construction and for that oversight of, of the, of that process, let alone that we've got a single point person, I just keep coming back to that, Lindsay and Gail primarily, but, but the principals will be as well. So that's our go-to person. Because otherwise I still struggle in my head with, well, what does that look like? Well, for this project, it's that guy and for this project, it's that lady and for this guy, you know.
Yeah, because we, I'm reversing how we want to, how we skin the cat. To you all, every time you meet on the, on the, with the board every month, there, there's a single project going on and it's the bond referendum project. It might be divided up into, in between three to five packages, but you're gonna want a summary of, of how things are going. And so to have a singular entity come in and say, yep, things are, things are on track, things are on budget, or not, and I'm taking care of them this way, as opposed to, well, Harold and Curtis can say, I, I got my hands around this one, I can't tell you about those other ones because I wasn't low bidder, you know. So it, I think there's, I think there is real value in that, in that oversight, that additional layer of management. And then we're typically, contractually not, we can't provide that layer because of our, of our current way our liability insurance is drafted. We, now, you can pay us additional fee and go out there, but my point is, one or the other, that additional layer of oversight and management is gonna be paid for. Now, you'd rather have that person already folded into the contractual obligations of one of the entities who's actually doing some of the work, as opposed to a third party like a, an owner's rep who isn't under contract and responsible without any liability at all, they're just there to observe. So I kind of threw a lot of stuff out there right there, but it, in this particular scenario, with the level of oversight and management and single point of contact, a CM scenario seems to be an appropriate way to, to address it.
You know, you saw Mike and Aaron shared, you know, a little bit of a peek behind the curtain of the process they go through to estimate a project beforehand and how granular they get even.
With those specifications on there.
And every, you know, at every stage of the project, they're putting together an estimate and a budget and it's incredibly detailed, you know, they're, they're getting into some integrated details. In owner's rep, you know, retired Mason that Harold suggested, you're not gonna get that same level of service. So even though, you know, that was suggested as here, it's gonna be a lot cheaper, it is gonna be like, you get what you pay for, you know. That, that level of sophistication only comes with hiring a sophisticated construction management firm.
Do you see them do the comparison very often, like they talked about with EZG?
I mean, I don't know.
I've never seen that, I've never seen that, you know.
Would that, would that affect your, I mean, you guys, I'm out of my area of comfort here, but does that affect your like bidders or anything like that if you tried to compare the two?
Definitely, I think, I think it affects how the, how the project is put together in terms of design, in terms of how it's scoped. I mean, there's a lot of, you're asking the design team to not do two separate bid packages, but at least organize it completely different ways that will affect the cost of both.
And I think, I think you'd have a hard time, you know, what Harold and Curtis were suggesting too, is that you'd have the CM with all the various bid packages underneath it and then bid all as GC, subtracting out the construction manager. And I, I just don't see a construction manager ever allowing themselves to be subtracted from the project after it's, after it's bid. Then, then they're just the pre-construction manager and they, they don't get the second portion of that.
I don't know.
The whole time I was, I had in my mind.
But that would be the idea, you'd bid out the construction management and pre-construction management.
Because they are both.
Would be the only way that would work.
That's true, right.
I wonder how, what they would, if that document was there and there was a CM in and.
And let's say in that scenario, which I really, again, appreciate them coming with different solutions, in that scenario, let's say that it is GC that's low, that would, I think we'd be obligated to take that. And then we're back to, well, do we really have somebody representing the district here?
Is that what we really want?
Is that what we really want? So ultimately, to me, it gets back to that question and what we need to get comfortable with is, can we, can we spend the money that's, that's needed to do that?
I think that's, that's what I come down to Tyler, is exactly that, is like, what do we want and what do we value? And while I think we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to try to spend like a responsible low amount of money on it, we have a higher responsibility to build a right building for our students, in my perspective. And also to not overwhelm the district employees who should be focused on running the school. And so like, I put building, probably like, I don't want to overload any of our employees. And I'm only responsible for one, so I'm really talking about Lindsay, I don't want to overwhelm Lindsay. And then, I like you though, yeah. And then the, and then, and then how do we build the right thing for what we want to do in education? And then the next one is how do we do that in sort of the most fiscally responsible way? And, and I think if we're not careful, we're gonna end up putting the dollars, the final thing, because it's the lowest bidder and we gotta take it. And then we're like, to your point exactly, because the way that all of this is set up, we've all of a sudden said, well, what we really are thinking is just how do we do this in the cheapest, instead of how do we do what we set out to do in the whole process when we started two years ago? And so that, I would go back and just say, again, we're not, we're not coming to a conclusion tonight, right? This is, this is just a working session. But I want to make sure that we're, we're keeping in front of all of us, that things we're set out to do and sort of the priority of the goals here, not just the stinking cheapest way we can do it, is sort of how I'm thinking. So again, I think we need to compare all these things and across all of those sort of like, that matrix essentially of things. I don't have any fancy skinny cat mole and all metaphors to pull on here, but like, that's the thing we got to do. And to me, my prioritization is definitely make sure that we, we can do this in a way that doesn't just swamp our staff, that we build the right facility that we set out to do. And then the third one would be, you know, a reasonable cost to that.
And I, I think I'm, I'm one that, I do look at the cost of it overall, right? And that's a factor, not, not.
We need to understand that.
I think, but I think what you have to do in order to, in my opinion, what I think I need to do in order to do my job is to know what is it that is the right thing and what do we value, to your point? And then make decisions based off of that. Because some things might be of such value that it's worth it to pay it. You just, you want to spend your money on where you get the most value. I think you, you hit it right there. And likewise, if we are gonna pay more, then we need to be able to communicate that value, right, to people to say, I know, I know, and this is why, clearly, you know, to me, accountability, I guess, in that respect. But I totally agree, at the end of the day, if you spend $10 million on something that wasn't what you wanted, wasted a lot more than your CM fees, right? I mean, you want it to be what it is that you set out to be. I'm picking on requirements, that's my thing, right? And I think this pre-construction phase is huge, so.
I would agree with what, what's been said. I think that we want to make sure that when we're using these funds, that we're gonna use them in the precise way, not to look at, well, we can get the cheapest thing here, but it's not gonna be what we need or what we want as we look at building this, this, these different projects. So, and, and again, I'm not trying to, I, I think that when I listen to some of the things as far as the different projects, it's nice to have people that are the experts in that field that are driving that. And, and again, I'm not an expert in that, so that's why we, you know, have those construction management.
Anything else you guys would like to add?
This would be a good discussion. Can I just ask, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Ben. Yeah, where are you, where are you, yeah, you're on camera too.
Yeah.
I mean, where, where are you coming out right now? Because the CM route will create more documents for you, but.
That's just, you know, it's just part of the project, as long as I don't have to wear a hard hat and not, and out there, you know, it's just.
As long as it's paper.
Yeah, it's just like every situation, whether it's this project or another situation, it's just part of the job, you just do it. And I, I don't look at it, well, if, if we would have chose this route, it would have been this way. It's just what is done, the decision's been made and you move forward and it's just part of the job. So it does not, I don't have a feeling of one way or the other, that whatever decision's made, we go with it and that's just part of the job and part of the project. As long as we don't have you in a hard hat and you in a bulldozer. I think the relationship is gonna be huge, the relationship that, having the personal, the, the, somebody that values the district and is advocating for the district, whatever, you know, I think that's a huge piece of this kind of thing.
Anything else, Tyler, when you got anything, next steps? Do you have anything you want to talk about there, Sam?
Well, if there's some additional cost analysis that we want to do, I could, I could have some additional conversations with both entities and say, hey, is there, can you, can you help us break these costs down a little bit better so we know what we're paying for it? So if that, if that's a desire, I could attempt to have those conversations. I'm not, I mean, if you're looking at the spreadsheet that I put together, I even mislabeled some of it, you know, some of those reimbursables that I have listed, some aren't represented under Story's number, so their number's actually gonna be a little bit higher based on this spreadsheet analysis that I did. So I, I didn't get it right and I'm, I'm somewhat, I know what I'm doing at this worth, right? So I'm trying to, I'm not entirely sure what that analysis looks like, but we can attempt to do something more.
Is it ever fair to go at it from a different angle? Maybe you'll say, no, we could ever do this. To say what's not included in this cost? I mean, is that an easier angle to say?
Good point.
What isn't included in this, you know, or something because?
We often write that in our own contracts, very specifically, what's not included is X, Y and Z, just so it's very clear.
Yeah, I mean, not, maybe not mine, I'm, I'm not suggesting that amount of work, but if we had some idea, maybe that would just be enough.
Yeah, good, good question.
If that's something they're willing to do and would be.
Yeah, what, okay, what, what other things? Because I, I asked them, so if dumpsters aren't part of reimbursables, show me and give me a number on what that could be. And some of the other things that.
Some swag at it.
We know that, we know that it's kind of a moving target as the project progresses, we get that, but.
But you also know that you're gonna have at least one or two dumpsters. Now, you don't know if you're gonna have six or anything, but you know you're gonna have.
Yeah, so to me, we need to be comfortable if that is apples to apples. So I do think we want to circle the wagons one more time, making sure that we're comfortable, because right now it's pretty clear that that's truly apples for CM. I guess my question is, then, of those costs that are there, how much of that would be borne if we went the GC route so as to say, this is our estimate that really comes out to, these are the services for pre-construction, because that's not in GC, these are the services that come with the oversight on a daily basis that represents the district, because that's not in GC.
Right.
Right? So those, really, that, that's the additional cost we're talking about in order to, to choose CM if we go that route. And so I think just make sure that that's apples to apples, so if we do choose CM, we know which one we're going with.
Yeah.
And I don't know that you put a bunch of burden on Pike or, or Story in this case to say, okay, now tease out some more numbers. Help us with those estimates from CM, well, how much of that would be already in a, in a GC approach?
Gotcha.
And what wouldn't be?
Yeah.
Because the what wouldn't be is, well, that's what we gotta decide, that's the value we want to pay for the services we think we need.
Yeah, well said, seems like a consensus, that we need those services, so now we just need to know what the price tag is.
Yeah. Yep, good. Move to adjourn?
I'll entertain motion.
Ireland, that was a motion?
I know, I have a second.
Oh, second.
Nice. There we go, say aye. All votes, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good, good, go, go, go.
Quick, be careful of the ayes.